Let me begin with what I think some of the current problems are. Problems from the former Grumman facility include what I believe is a growing use as a truck distribution center that's several miles from the LIE or any other suitable transportation means. It's a large, I think about 300 acre...
Yes, well, Robert, we begin. I come from Massapequa. I just have one to address resolution, actually I have four of them. 568?
568, go ahead.
I'd just like to ask you, Mr. Supervisor, do you intend on releasing the town budget prior to the elections so that...
You mean the final budget? Excuse me? The final budget?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
569, it's been spoken about quite a bit. The only thing I'd like to say about it is really dissatisfied that we even need to have these meetings. They seem like a redundant waste of resources. The state, New York State, has made comments, statements that they contacted the Town of Oyster Bay, and I'm just a little displeased that the town didn't answer their letters, and I think this whole situation could have been avoided if you took action. I mean, frankly, it's a taste of the main matter here. We're acting after the fact. We're trying to fix things that shouldn't be broken to begin with.
Much like the main matter, that's not the way it went down, but who all gets it?
Resolution 570, I was wondering if you could tell me, who the outside council is? Why are they being paid? And how much are they being paid?
571, John, is somebody helping? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
Anything identify your resolution? Have identified by the resolution, Quinn Manuel, where it's from, solve it.
Thank you very much. And I just have one last question on 571. It's commencement of legal proceedings against Woodstock Construction Company. I'm just curious, could you explain what the legal proceedings are going on and what exactly is happening there? Why the town is suing?
If you think about it, you remember that Matt May from East Norwood Civic, I don't know if Matt is here, but he's not, okay. Matt's gone up here several times. We discussed the matter openly in public comment period, and Matt looked at a whole bit of these phone violations. The town pursued the phone violations with notices to violation and summits, and we don't seem to make a whole lot of progress, so it feels time to take action, and the state's pretty important to see. Hold on, Angel, I have a problem here. Robert Frye.
Hi, good afternoon, Robert Frye from Woodbury.
Good afternoon, Robert Frye.
Just to add on to what Ms. Lucetic said earlier, according to the Department of Transportation, the town was first notified of this pending access road designation in October of 2014. Did you receive that notice? Or did anyone in the town receive that notice?
I know, that's a long time ago, I'm not remembering right now, but is this the original letter when they sent it? This directed into what? Yeah, well, Robert, we're dealing with a county road. The state, for whatever reason, sent a letter to the Town of Oyster Bay seeking, requesting us to determine whether a hearing was necessary. They also sent a copy of the letter to the county, whose road it was. And I understand the county never responded. I think that's how this started. But again, I remind you that despite all of the smoke and mirrors, all the state has to do is say, residents, no problem. And just leave us the heck alone, because I think nobody knows better than what belongs on the streets of our town and the residents who live here. And I think Tanya spoke quite well with that point of view, and we now need to take a bullet of horns and get everybody in the same room, just like I said.
I agree. Thank you. Just the only comment was the DOT purposely notifies the town and the county, and I think perhaps everyone, you know, I don't know if you, I certainly didn't know until not too long ago what the word access road meant. I think probably most people think it's an on-ramp onto an expressway or something, but obviously now we're all educated, but according to that rule, apparently, when those notifications go out, both the town and the county have the opportunity, have 90 days then to have a hearing.
Yeah, you make the work, we understand that.
Okay, so thank you for finally addressing it.
As Tanya said, let's work together, make sure the story happens. Thank you, Bob. Angel Cepeda. And I don't know how many corporate names they have, but I think everybody commonly knows it has the Singh...
Just ask them, come on.
...and potential for rather extraordinary civil litigation.
So I understand that 250,000 is not an authorization which was previously given, but this is a two authorized payment?
Right, so a previously authorized representative, and they're paying a bill for the work they've done.
And what has been the status of the litigation?
Well, it may not be quite that simple, but I'll do the best I can. I think we have to start with the fact that the highest priority here is to ensure that we protect the Town of Oyster Bay resident taxpayers. We unfortunately don't have the luxury of getting involved in some of the political rhetoric, the conjecture, and the misinformation that's been out there. Simply put, you know, the facts are that all arrears, with the help of outside counsel, just to keep this on point, simply put, all of the arrears have been paid, and the concession air is up to date. At this point, the town has not paid even $1 for the improvements that have been made at all the facilities pursuant to the original concession agreement, and we had a very good summer, a very good summer at the beaches. The Woodlands is operating quite well. We've interviewed, we've interviewed a number of the individuals who had various parties and weddings there over the past month or so, and we do exit interviews and what have you, and they've been very, very satisfied with the service. We have town personnel monitoring of the activities at the Woodlands, and we ensure that that continues. We have to maintain a very delicate balance, if you will, of maintaining an operational success while at the same time not exposing the Town of Oyster Bay to any potential civil liability. This isn't analogous to what you saw in the Brookhaven situation, which dealt with only one beach concession, as I recall. The Town of Oyster Bay has to be far more deliberate and far more measured because there are multiple facilities involved. Councils for which, whose bill we now pay has and will continue to preserve all of our legal remedies and options. They're actively working to resolve the situation in the best interest of the town. Very confident in their ability, they've done a great job so far. I really can't go too much further on the record because of the multitude of legal issues that are present in this matter, but I do want to reassure all town residents that the town still hasn't paid, not even $1, for the improvements to date, and we'll continue to make sure that, if it's true, that the opera, we'll continue to ensure the operational success of all the facilities involved here. That's our highest priority. I do want to correct one statement, though. For the better part of the year, I have been saying, I think at virtually every public hearing that I can recall, that if and when the time comes that the current concession agreement is terminated or otherwise ends, the Town of Oyster Bay would only be responsible for at most $2 million at the Woodlands and nothing at any of the beach concessions. And the reason I make that statement is because contractually, improvements were made at the Woodlands, and actually in excess of $2 million, but...
I won't try to ask any further except to say that it's obvious that there is still no recognition that this was an improper contract, and I'm very sorry to see that this is the case.
Thank you. Thank you. I have no other speakers, but we expect to...
Yes, you do, you have one more, Tom, please. I can't sit here for three hours.
Come on up, sir.
Be allowed to be allowed to say something.
Good morning, Tom, morning. Yes, I just got a closing counter, go ahead. Same idea, go away.
On the motion?
This is great.
Second, on the vote, Supervisor Vendetta, Councilman Mascherella, Councilman Magno, Councilman Cazagana, Councilman Pinto, Councilwoman Alessia, Councilwoman Johnson. Motion to adopt resolution number 568, 2015, to 571, 2015, passes with seven ayes.
Five ayes. Mr. Mascherella, make a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second, for favor, opposed to a move, we stand the jury will begin the public comment period. Sir?
Good afternoon. I want to thank the board for this opportunity to come up and speak to you, but also, you know, I'm only here for, to let you know that there are a lot of people in the Town of Oyster Bay that really appreciate what each and every one of you do every day. Now, the rhetoric that's going on out there, I mean, Lord knows where it's coming from or where it's going to, but please understand that most of the people are not even listening to it. They can talk all they want, but this board, the Town of Oyster, I've been in Oyster Bay since 1961, that's a long time. You have to understand, most people love where they live, they love what yous do, Labor supports you guys 1,000 percent. You put a lot in there. Please understand, when I stand here and I say that Labor supports you, what that means is, I want to clarify what that means. We will work hard to make sure everyone gets reelected, we will do the best that we can to denounce some of this rhetoric, and I personally have never been shy in my life, and if I need to tell, so this meeting's closed, right, John? I will tell somebody, they're full of shit, make no doubt about it. So I just wanted the opportunity to thank you guys, let you know we're here. I'm retired, but I still live in the same house, I'm not going nowhere, and Labor will support you 1,000 percent. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, while you're getting set up, can I ask you a question?
Uh, maybe.
Good, I'll take maybe as a yes, that's how we do in my house. Did you post on Newsday's website that I am only sitting in my seat because of something my daddy did for me?
I think I probably did, yeah. Asshole.
Really?
You're gonna allow that?
You're gonna allow that, John?
An official meeting, John?
Really?
You're gonna allow these outbursts? You don't allow it other times.
Robert.
Vulgarity, threats.
Oh, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna admonish him?
You're gonna allow that?
But everybody else can say what they have to say?
Are you saying guys hated that lady the last time? I wouldn't let her speak?
No, I don't think so. Again, it's somebody else.
Oh, that wasn't you, was it? I was the one that...
Did you plan this so that we would leave? We should be afraid? Is that why you're allowing this to happen?
It's not business, again, yeah.
Is that a threat?
You know where I live, it's not my house, I don't want it. Don't pound me, brother. Don't pound me, I'm not your friend that don't want to. I don't know where you live. You see boys, John?
Because of something my father did.
I'll tell you who I am.
Go right ahead. Unlike you who were appointed in a secret meeting upstairs in a non-hormonal meeting room to your position on the school board, I was elected twice, and you are discounting the votes of the men and women of this, please don't interrupt me, I'll give you a chance to respond.
But don't get your putting out these statements.
Robert.
Were you not elected in a different meeting room than you, were you not appointed in a different meeting room than you usually met it? Didn't you generally meet in the Wheatley School Board Room, and on that particular day when you were appointed, it was in a separate room?
No.
In a five-minute meeting?
No, not at all.
It was not in a five-minute meeting?
Not at all. Where are you getting your information from?
Well, it's interesting, because all of the minutes of the East Williston Union Free School District are posted online.
Yeah.
Another meeting that I thought was interesting, in addition to that...
Where are you getting your information from on the five-minute meeting? Where is that from? Can you tell me where that's from?
Absolutely. On July 15th of 2008, there was a special five-minute meeting held to appoint you to this board.
Where are you reading from?
They're from minutes.
That's from the minutes of five-minute meeting?
It was a five-minute meeting. It convened at, just bear with me one minute.
It was 8:12.
At 8:12, and the meeting was disposed at 8:17, is that right?
Yes.
There was a question earlier, you said that the budget would be done before, before Election Day. Will it be adopted before Election Day?
I don't know the answer to that yet, but the final budget will be announced before Election Day.
But there's a difference between the final budget and an adopted budget, so...
That's what I'm telling you. The final budget will be announced before Election Day. That moment of that announcement, or at the meeting, depending on how this is handled, it will be final.
Will you commit to that, so that that will not change after that?
I'm just, I told you that already, I'm telling you again, or sorry, yes.
Okay, all right.
Bob, we really have to move quickly, come on.
I'm moving, I've got a lot, I've got another...
Yes, time to move on.
We're not gonna tolerate too much more, so you better hit your plate.
Okay, some questions from our members. I was looking at the town payroll, and I don't want to make any assumptions or anything like that, but there is a Susan Magno listed on the town payroll at a salary at one time of $44,000. Is that someone related to you and who's working for the town or worked for the town?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Bob, it's a question not about ours, not us. If you want to have a character debate, have a debate, because she's way out of your league now.
Thanks again, I probably shouldn't say it. You really should stop.
You're all...
I have another question, I have another question, Mr. Fussig, no, no.
We're all having a good time.
Elizabeth, okay, and so she's on the payroll as well?
Yes.
Where did she go to work?
And, um, actually, okay, thank you.
I think this cop stepped in.
Bring him in yourself.
Ms. Alessia, I don't know if there's a person, payroll, is she related to you? It's just the same, that's it.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, now I just, I just got a statement, it's basically, John, I've done the research...
Threats.
I don't know why, Robert, I've just been helping a lot, because now I don't know what election is doing, but what do you got, you want to make a statement?
Okay, John, I've done the research, when the town's bond rating goes down, as it has three times, it has to end up costing the average taxpayer. My assumption is that after Moody's concludes their current investigation regarding the missing Singh, the Singh liabilities, our bond rating will go down to junk status. To put it in simple language, if I have a 400 credit score, it's going to cost me a lot more to get a car loan or a mortgage than someone who has a 750 credit score. The same concept applies to the town, which is over 800 million in debt and had to borrow money one month to make payroll. As bad as Nassau County is fiscally right now, they have never had to borrow to make payroll. The town's website has a link to your Facebook page. Now, I know that everything on Facebook is true, I suppose, and I think, say that in jest, but let me read a sentence from the bio on your Facebook page that the town points you to from the town website. It says, "As a fiscal conservative, his budgets have maintained all the essential services and programs that help make Oyster Bay communities among the finest in the nation while earning the highest possible credit rating from Standard and Coors, AAA, and an AA3 credit rating from Moody's Investor Services." I'd just like to suggest that you update that.
All right, you suggest you will be taking other advice.
Thank you.
Now, one statement you made in the, now, one, one sentence, that statement, that is accurate.
There's nothing really worth saying.
I don't know if you remember the lines from the movie My Cousin Bing, I'm just saying, just disregard everything this guy just said. Come on, Bobby. Stefano, where are you?
I'm not done yet.
You are.
I might finish, really, miss. Okay, I'll read it as quick as I can. Okay, "With the illegal loan guarantees that you, John, signed and the board unanimously voted on in favor of..."
Make sure you pan all these...
"...you have forever violated the trust of the people who elected you to represent..."
Not true.
"Just looking, just looking at the past year alone..."
Four more years.
It's only two, by the way.
You're asking me to speed up? So, just, just looking at the past year alone, you have had your top commissioner, Frederick Hippolito, indicted for tax evasion, which he disclosed, yet you either did not know or turned a blind eye after he was indicted. You allowed him to continue working for the town with your unwavering support. You extended SRBs and Mr. Singh's agreements with the town to 2065 and 2070, a future generation. You and your top attorney have reported, have not reported donations to the political clubs, which you were the biggest recipient of the money. You claimed one bad apple that you didn't, one bad apple that you know about was responsible for the Singh loan guarantees, yet you and the board unanimously approved them, and yours and Mr. Genova's notarized signatures are on the loan documents. And you're both attorneys, you should have known better. And this board, which unanimously voted aye, should have understood what they were voting for, because there is no possible way that you all could have voted aye, thinking it was in the town's best interest. At the June 23rd meeting, you said, and I quote, "I don't think you will find any concessionaires out there that would, that would want the arrangement that Singh has." I tend to disagree with that, that's a pretty good arrangement.
Bob, we've been, Bob, we've been on this countless times.
I'm reading my statement.
You can read the statement all you want, but I'm gonna say it again, and I have to say it one more time, that this, your statement is repeated, virtually every sentence is totally and wholly ineffective. I have limitations imposed upon me by council, and I have to respect them for the good of yours, so to speak. But I said to you, that you were talking about all these loans that were signed and all this money that's owed, and I got done telling you, when this story is written based upon all of the evidence produced, this town would never, under any circumstances, owe more than that original two million I told you about at the Woodlands, and owes nothing at the beaches. And in fact, I've modified that statement now to say that we will owe nothing on the Woodlands either, based on the way I see it now, based on the way I see it now. So all of these things you're saying, you're talking as if the town bought, authorized, and all these loans were valid. I'm telling you now, I'm telling you now, that's not the way it happened.
Well, can I give you this, these minutes?
I didn't want you to be telling.
Okay, I didn't think so.
I'm telling, I'm telling you now, I'm telling you now, you have the story all wrong. If you had read the indictment, I...
I did.
You could start to understand what happened here. And I'm telling you one more time, the town is not gonna end up owing anybody at the end of the day when the story is finally written. I know that you're rooting for the town to fail, I get it, you want to win so bad that you'll stand at the podium and say those scurrilous things about the Town of Oyster Bay. You're turning off people's impression of the town, their image of the town, you're probably impacting that bond rating more than anything else. What you're doing to property values when you make careless, reckless statements, all because you want to win the election. That's all this is about, that. You want the town to lose. You want, you want the town to fail. Shame on you. That's not the way it works, I think. You've been coming before this board countless times. I haven't heard you once, not once, express your vision for the Town of Oyster Bay.
My vision for the Town of Oyster Bay...
You're a rat in that.
Excuse me.
My vision for the Town of Oyster Bay...
We had it, we had it.
Excuse me.
No, this is a disgrace, I can't, I think it's disgraceful. You and your team, nice and comfortable behind your computer, in a very sneaky manner, you're all brave, you're all bold, you're always really disgusting, and you make fun of people's physical appearance.
Who's a trouble?
Yeah, you make fun of people's physical appearance, you say very cruel things about people, and all because you want to win so bad. And you're hurting the reputation of the town. You know, it's interesting.
The town did some bad things.
It's, no, the town did nothing bad.
Oh.
And you said some, you know, you're an interesting fellow. You didn't live in the town two years ago, but you were smart enough to come, you said, you told me you moved here two years ago.
A little over two years.
So you knew where to go in there, right? You knew the Town of Oyster Bay.
I do live there.
Supervisor, you said you've seen him at countless meetings, but the truth is, until he declared his candidacy, I never saw Mr. Frye in this room.
That's the whole point. Finish your statement, please.
Okay, so, find my place, okay. You did, as you just said, now, you told me that I didn't, that I didn't do my homework and that I should do my homework. Well, I have done my homework, John. As CEO of our town, when will you accept responsibility for the things that happened under your watch? As Harry Truman said, "The buck stops here." Where does the buck stop in the Town of Oyster Bay?
Well, I don't know, Harry Truman, come on.
I think perhaps you should do some self-reflection and realize that you have perhaps been supervisor too long, that it's time to step down and let someone else...
Four more years. Four more years, Bob.
Very good, Harry. Robert, rip, let's go.
Here we go.
I'm sorry, John, how come you're not calling in the order? It says on the town website that, that's the rules, you're not following your rules. You're not following your rules again, there.
I follow this rule.
John, follow this one.
I agree.
Stop that and follow.
Yes.
What are you gonna do?
Hello, this is Supervisor Ward, I just want to remind you that a couple of meetings ago, you made a big statement about how people are gonna get called in a number that they, that they signed up to speak, and you aren't gonna stand for switching them, or, or people asking to speak at different times, and if you take a look at my, my request to speak, I put the time on, I signed it at 09:25, so I guess you purposely called me later in the day.
Okay, it's noted, go ahead, Robert.
Thank you, John. At the last meeting, at the last meeting that I attended, you made, you made some statements, I'm gonna quote, "Political opponents are hurting the taxpayer. Political opponents are giving ideas to people who cause some of the problems we are faced with. They're giving momentum to some of the people who have caused the problems." What I'd like to know is how and why you think that your political opponents, or for that matter, anyone else besides yourself as the chief CEO of the town, which is how you have previously described yourself to blame for the alleged SRB scheme, which is what you were discussing at the time?
Well, I have a new policy, I'm no longer answering silly questions.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Supervisor, I brought the documents that revealed irregularities with the SRB contracts to your attention on July 21st at a town meeting. Could you tell me, did you... Very good, Harry. Robert Riff, let's go.
Here we go. Here we go.
I'm sorry, John. How come you're not calling in the order? It says on the town website that... That's the rules. You're not following your rules. You're not following your rules again there.
Follow this rule.
John, follow this rule.
Hello, Mr. Supervisor, my board. I just want to remind you that a couple of meetings ago, we had a big statement about how people are gonna get called in a number that they, that they signed up to speak, and you aren't gonna stand for switching them, or people asking to speak at different times. And if you take a look at my, my request to speak, I put the time on it. I signed it at 09:25. So I guess you purposely called me later in the day.
Okay, it's noted. Go ahead, Robert.
Thank you, John. At the last meeting, at the last meeting that I attended, you made, you made some statements, I'm gonna quote. "Political opponents are hurting the taxpayer. Political opponents are giving ideas to people who cause some of the problems we are faced with. They're giving momentum to some of the people who have caused the problems." What I'd like to know is how and why you think that your political opponents, or for that matter, anyone else besides yourself as the chief seat of the town, which is how you have previously described yourself to blame for the alleged SRB scheme, which is what you were discussing at the time.
Robert, I have a new policy. I'm no longer answering silly questions.
So, Mr. Supervisor, I brought the documents that revealed irregularities with the SRB contracts to your attention on July 21st at a town meeting. Could you tell me, did you notify anybody after that meeting about the possible crimes that were revealed? Wanted to read those documents?
Robert, I said before, I have new policy. I'm not asking, I'm not answering silly questions.
You didn't see Mr. Riff on July 21st when I provided you with those documents? You didn't even need them. They asked me where I got them from that day. Are you saying that you had no knowledge of any of this questionable behavior that was happening with SRB prior to July 21st?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying I'm not answering silly questions anymore.
Do you get the hint?
You're silly goose.
I'm sorry, brother. You've already, you've already corrected me a number of times speaking out. Are you gonna allow this to happen on your watch?
Continue, Robert.
I'll take that as a yes. You're gonna allow it to happen? Or is that a silly question?
Continue.
Okay. You haven't even thanked me for bringing any of this SRB stuff to your attention. I mean, if I didn't bring it up to you, it'd still be going on, right? Nothing to say about that, John? Okay, you make it seem like I'm the one that's done something wrong when I come up here with the hostility I'm treating it with.
You know what? I never have said anything even in the whole...
I didn't say you did. I said you make it seem. You infer. Mr. Supervisor, and I hope you don't, I hope you don't consider this stupid. If any town officials are eventually convicted of the crimes that may or may not have been committed in relation to the SRB schemes, will the town pursue recompense to recover the damages that we're paying now in these lawsuits to protect ourselves in these, in this alleged scheme? In other words, you're talking about the indictment, which I read a number of times. Although there are some co-conspirators named, and judging by the indictment, I'll assume, and I might be wrong, that Frederick May, the former town attorney, is co-conspirator number three. I mean, his, in the indictment, it says that he arranged meetings for all the town officials with the SRB bank officials. So I'm just curious, if it turns out down the road, and I hope that the town doesn't owe anything, and I hope that you are just ignorant of all this, and you just dropped the ball, you weren't involved. But if anybody is eventually convicted, I mean, we're already $750,000 or whatever into an attorney. Are we gonna try to get that money back from these people if they're convicted?
Robert, I'm not gonna answer hypothetical questions suggesting that people in the town are guilty. I, it's very hard to understand when you're talking about it. It looks like you're coming upon it to seems to tell you that you're so, you seem to be so unhappy, and you're rooting so hard for the town to fail, but I'm beginning to think that you're very disappointed. But I'll, I'll, I don't want to project my opinions on you as I...
John, I'd explain something to you.
Let me finish. I'm just not gonna entertain any more of this thing. Come on, move on.
All right, so let me explain something to you. I'm surely not hoping for the town to fail. I love the town, but if you, I grew up in Freeport, man. I've been in Oyster Bay. Okay, I'm not rooting for the town to fail. I'm rooting for the, for the corrupt leaders that we have to fail. So let's get that straight, okay? Mr. Supervisor, have you been contacted by the FBI irrigation to this Singh...
I told you, I'm not, I'm not gonna be cross-examined by you and answering silly questions.
Oh, okay. So you just consider all these questions silly?
Yes.
Okay. So how is it related to my concerns then? Is that okay?
But you're very quick. You might have got it, John.
Oh, all right, that's the usual. I'm not gonna answer them.
Thank you, quick.
Okay, John, I just want to tell you that I'm being sorry for the little last seven months of attending town meetings. I've documented on video, in my opinion... Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I do have one question. I, I, and this is a question for all of you. It's been reported that allegedly, there's been allegations of county and town officials accepting unlawful gratuities in enterprises of SRB and Singh restaurants. And I'd like to ask each of you, have any of you ever accepted anything which might be considered unlawful gratuity, like a free meal, or use of a venue, or a restaurant space from SRB concessions or any enterprise? I'd like to ask you something, Mr. Riff. Listen, I can understand you don't want to answer, but I have a right to ask. Does anybody take your free meals?
As much as you're hoping.
I'm not hoping. You could dispel it all right now by saying no.
Let me finish the question. Let me finish the answer.
You're gonna let me finish my question?
In spite of how, how hard you're rooting for a certain answer, there's been nothing written anywhere that pays body in this board did anything wrongful or unlawful or accepted any gratuities or did anything of the sort. And the board is not gonna be cross-examined by you. I don't know. Something's wrong. I just got done telling you. There's been no allegations anywhere that any member of this board did anything wrong or did anything unlawful or accepted any lawful gratuities.
Anything, anything. And I'm asking you for a yes or no answer.
Let's go, let's go.
All right. When you were asked a couple of meetings ago about Mr. Singh's political donations, and I'll quote, you said, "I don't know. I'll get you an answer. I would guess that he probably has contributed over the many years. I don't know to what extent. Everyone would have to look at their own personal records. I don't have mine with me right now."
I don't have the thing with me.
That's great. I have something with me. This is a fundraising event that was run by Mr. Singh for you with a minimum contribution of $1,000. There, there's multiple videos and photographs all over the internet that shows prominent town leaders, including yourself, at many functions. And as a matter of fact, it appears to me that you have a friendship, a relationship with Mr. Singh. Don't you think it's unethical to enter into business when you're representing residents of the town? You're responsible for these contracts, and you're friends with the guy? There's no, there's no ethical implication there?
I don't think there's anything unethical in the relationship that I or anybody has with this board and Mr. Singh.
Okay, thank you. So as I was saying earlier, I'm concerned that over the last seven months of attending town meetings, I documented on video, in my opinion, each town official, or each individual town board member's willingness to turn a blind eye to every incident of misconduct I've substantiated and brought to your attention. You're the only unanimous group of people I've encountered to deny every incident I've informed you of. I'm concerned that you don't have the resolve and the fortitude to think for yourselves. I'm extremely concerned that during these last seven months of attending and video recording the town meetings, I've repeatedly documented the town supervisor reversing or changing his answers from meeting to meeting, purposely giving misinformation within answers to questions, at times, in my opinion, outright lying in answers. My biggest concern is that, according to Mr. Vendo, the problems our town is facing have been caused by somebody else besides himself and Mr. Genova, whose signatures are on the loan documents. No one else's signatures are on the documents. Let's be clear, John. There's no one else to blame but you.
Excellent. Now you have, you have nothing...
No, I'm sorry. No, I don't have any time. I don't want to listen.